And we'd like to have a call to the public. Is there any cards? And we have one, Ms. Summers.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. Mr. Chairman and member of the subcommittee, I will not be spending a lot, I wouldn't be spending a lot of time on the homeless by choice issue if I didn't find, think solutions and answers were there. Daily, I watch the negative impact of homeless by choice on our neighborhoods, parks, libraries, and businesses. At Pierce Park, the bathrooms are locked now, and a biohazardous team had to come in and clean out the area, and now we have porta potties. At Lozalivo's Park, homeless by choice are camped by the children's playground. The parents can no longer use Ramada to watch their children because it's full, and there's issues having to do with men being in the women's bathrooms. The seniors are leaving the walking club because they don't feel safe. Last month's minutes referenced Chairman Noakowski asking for some information. I noticed it wasn't on this agenda. I hope to see it on a future agenda. There are homeless by choice issues that Phoenix Care's $7 million, will not answer. The issue has to do with communication between departments. Thank you.
Thank you, madam. With that, there's no other calls to the public, so we're on item number one, approval of the minutes.
Move approval.
All right, I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We have consent items two through four.
Actually, I would move two and four for approval. I believe you have a card on three.
All righty, so we have a motion and a second for items two and four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. We're on item number three, and we have a card. Maybe we'll bring up the individual first. Candace, come on up.
Good morning. Proposition 301 was passed by the voters in 1993 to provide funds for neighborhood protection and to grow our block watch programs. We are being asked today on your agenda to provide funds out of the monies that are designated for neighborhoods. I have sent supporting documentation to all of city council that gives reference to the appropriation budgets for the 2017 of $33,524,720 that are already earmarked for neighborhood protection ordinance, so the police department is supposed to be receiving 75% of those funds. I don't understand why we are being asked to give up part of the reserves that our neighborhoods, who have been fiscally responsible and have returned monies to the city, that that cushion will not be there to grow the program or to allow us to expand funding for neighborhoods that are asking for it through the grants. So I ask you to vote no on funding that $500,000 out of neighborhood reserves.
Thank you so much. Can we have maybe some legal? Yeah. So we're talking about proposition 301 and some of the allocations going to officers. Can you explain that to us, if it's allowed or not allowed?
Yes, Chairman Noakowski and members of the subcommittee. As you see, we have a team up here at the table to address the concern raised by Ms. Fremell and any other questions that you might have.
Yes, Chairman Noakowski. Patricia Boland.
Oh, sorry. Patricia Boland from the Law Department. I looked at the proposition. Mr. Barton asked me if the monies could be used for positions that are totally dedicated to the block watch programs. I looked at the language of the proposition and determined that it could be used. The money for the block watch programs was for additional resources, brought additional resources that did not exist at the time. So these are positions that are totally dedicated to block watch, and I determined that the proposition did allow their use this way.
And then the other question for accounting is, do we actually watch that budget in making sure that we do have enough revenues for those grants that those volunteer block watch individuals put in every year for?
Chairman Noakowski, as you well know, as a part of the council adopted balancing plan, Public Safety Funds Balancing Plan that you adopted back in October 2010, considerable oversight is applied to these particular funds. Every year, my staff, as well as the staff in other departments, review the expenditures in these funds to make sure, number one, they're appropriate, and to make sure that, number two, that we can sustain the number of officers that we've committed to through the ballots and through the propositions that created those funds. Based on also a review of the audit, this audit actually looked at these funds this year as part of an audit of all restricted funds, and they determined that all of the expenditures that were used in Prop. 301, as well as all the other public safety funds plans, were actually in alignment with all ballot propositions as well. So first and foremost, we're spending the money the way the ballots have prescribed that they be spent. Secondly, the actual positions, as Patty alluded to, these four positions do nothing but support the block watch program. So they are not administrative oversight. These positions did not exist prior to the block watch program. So again, they are direct costs tied to the block watch program and the administration thereof. If the block watch program did not exist, these four positions would not exist. Therefore, they should not be in expense of the general fund. And yes, we do, we look at these, we look at all of these funds and monitor them on an active basis. Block watch in itself, the fund balance has grown since fiscal year 2012, 2013. The portion that funds block watch has gone from a fund balance of roughly $1.7 million to about $3.5 million at the end of last fiscal year. And that is with increased block watch grants being doled out. Anywhere from $1.2 million to $1.5 million has been given out over the last couple of years historically.
Why four positions?
Based on, again, I'd have to defer to the police department on that, but based on what I know of the positions, these positions are required to administer the program. They're responsible for helping to review all of the grants that come in, the proposals that come in, as well as just providing the oversight, the checks and balances that are required. There's considerable staff time involved in all of those grants that come in. And I'd have to defer to Jill for any more detailed information.
Councilwoman Williams. Jill Sly with the Police Department. Over the last five years, we have had an average of 178 grant applications submitted, and within those, 164, an average of 164, have been processed and approved. And that's the amount of grants that my staff, my four staff, manage, audit, and take a look at all the funding related to it on a monthly basis. And we receive about $1.3 million over the last five years. So these four staff members are 100% dedicated to this program and actually work extra hours on this program because we have monthly meetings, oversight committee meetings, the application process, the signing of all of the grants, workshops. We do a lot of different things for this program, and those four work a lot of hours for it.
Could you be a little bit more specific on what they do? When you say they have to review everyone, they have to monitor?
Well, at the end of each fiscal year, they're closing out all of the grants for the previous fiscal year and in June. And at the same time, they're having signing workshops for the new grants that have been approved by council. And also, on a monthly basis, they go out and they do kind of like spot audits of the items that have been purchased with the block watch grants, grant funds, in order to make sure that the funds are being used appropriately. And then we have the monthly oversight committee meetings that they prepare for when we do the grading of the grants, of all the applications.
Wait, you go to the grading?
No, we work with all, we work with the oversight committee to do the grading, but we are in charge of the meetings and making sure, but we prepare for each one of those meetings. We go through all the applications to make sure they fall within the guidelines of the application process, the whole packet that is sent out for all the block watch groups to take a look at what is eligible for the block watch grants and what is not. And we go through that, and we try to make sure that we identify any issues, so that when the oversight committee members review each one of the grant applications, they have all the information that they need.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So what I am hearing or interpreting is that there are four police officers that oversee and administer the block watch grants currently?
There are four civilians.
Civilians?
Yes.
Okay, so they're civilians?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm now really, so there are four civilians that oversee the block watch grant, administer it, making sure that the audits are, money's being spent getting audited. In addition to that, they attend pretty much, because I have gone to my block watch meetings, they pretty much attend all the meetings. They talk about what is happening, kind of, what is happening within the block watch world, but also what is rolling out, say, citywide or with police, where it's public safety dynamics, and they really just work with the block watches.
Yes, you are correct, Councilwoman Pastor. They also have to review, each block watch has to submit quarterly reports, and have to go through each one of those quarterly reports. And like I said, 164 block watches is the average that these four employees manage on an annual basis.
So they're making sure also that the reports are in, and if not, it's kind of, in my world, sometimes I'm a little behind on some reports, so they're also chasing to make sure the report gets done and making sure what is submitted is correct. I'm assuming there's receipts involved, a lot of stuff that in order to make sure we are, everybody's being held accountable for the block watch program.
You are correct. And they also assist with a lot of the oversight committee when they do the grading, because it's all done on the computer now. And sometimes it's a little challenging for some of our members, so they'll actually do one-on-ones with some of those members.
They're training also.
Exactly.
They're training in the whole process.
Exactly.
Of how or?
Or providing assistance. Yes.
Okay, and so what my understanding is that these four civilian positions are now, what's happening is we are having the block watch grant or fund or account monies now pay for those duties.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Jeff, this is for you. The, how much rollover is there in the fund balance?
So Councilwoman Williams, as I mentioned, back in 2012, 2013, the fund balance in the block watch portion, the 5% of the 1/10th increment of sales tax, was about $1.7 million. At the end of last fiscal year, that fund balance had grown to about $3.5 million. On average, the fund takes in about $1.7, $1.8 million a year, and they're giving out about $1.3 million a year, on average, when you look at the historical amounts. So they're rolling over into the fund balance almost $500,000 a year.
And is there anything that precludes us? I guess where I'm headed is, I don't want to see that fund balance grow, grow, grow if there's opportunities to get more out into the neighborhoods to help the block watches.
Sure.
But I also want to be assured, if we put four positions in there, we can afford it long-term.
Right. We will monitor the fund balance. We do quarterly reports that also go to the block watch committee on that fund balance to make sure that, you know, they've got ample, ample fund balance to ensure that they can sustain their program. Every fiscal year, as we go through our technical review process, our three-plus-nine process, the police department can ask if they want to dole out more money. And even if it's not necessarily in their budget, if they've got the fund balance, we will allow them to give out more grants if they've got quality grants that they feel necessary, that they want to fund.
Okay, so the oversight committee can recommend, I take it?
A higher amount.
A higher amount.
That is correct.
Okay.
Vice Mayor.
So I think, and we will hear, but I think one of the concerns is that we are moving four positions from the general fund, which is from the police budget, I'm assuming, and now moving it to the block watch grants. Because sustainability, like Councilwoman Williams, is we don't want to be in a situation where then the program is unsustainable, because we know the impact that it would have, that it has in our community. And I think that's one of the general concerns across our block watchers as to why is this now moving this way? What is the cost of the four civilians?
Based on the last estimate I had, the cost of the four positions is about $440,000.
And the fund balance has how much?
$3.5 million as of the end of fiscal year 1617.
And we have given how many block watches?
They give out about $1.3 million per year.
And if we grow, because I'm in the midst of growing block watches, then there's more block watches, meaning there's more competition, meaning there's less dollars? Or how does that look?
No, I mean, it depends on how you structure the program. Again, the resources that come into block watch every year are about $1.8 million. So if you take the $1.3 that historically has been giving out, plus the $400,000 for the staff, you still have about $100,000 in annual revenue that comes into the fund, plus you have the $3.5 million in fund balance. So I think, again, this will sustain itself for quite a while. The other thing to remember about the block watch fund is not only do you have the annual revenues that come in, there are also grants that come back. So people that don't satisfy the letter of intent on their grants, those come back as additional resources on a given year. And it's not uncommon for us to recapture about $300,000 a year in additional revenue that was awarded but not spent in a prior fiscal year.
All right, I have one more card. Candace?
I apologize. I don't know whether I'm having vertigo or if my head is spinning from all of the spin that's being put on this. We had last year 190 grant applications to the tune of $1.6 million applied for. Knowing that we were limited in how much we could award as the oversight committee, we had to do our due diligence to scrutinize every single application and either apply line item vetoes or caps. Those things are allowed for appeal. These neighborhoods come back for that. I'm listening to our attorney say that these funds are appropriate. The actual ballot language says no general, city, administrative, or overhead costs can be paid from these funds, and it's in capital letters. There have been amendments to the ordinance to allow for 3.5 FTE. We're being asked to fund four. I'm just totally confused. The new system, the grant management system, we spent, and Jill can correct me on this, I believe it was $600,000 to implement this, to make their job easier, and it's garbage. The committee, as we're scoring and grading those, it's so full of flaws, it's more frustration. We've had committee members resign because of it. So I'm really concerned that we're going to deplete a reserve from neighborhoods that have been fiscally responsible. I'm hearing 1.8 in, but we're having 1.6 applied for? That's $200,000 discrepancy if we were to award. The committee by fiscal management is being advised to limit our discussion on grading these grants. So I don't see them being scrutinized as carefully as they have been in the past. I see the committee making recommendation to fund even more. So with all due respect, I ask that you either table that request or deny it. Thank you.
So going back to the ballot language, could you explain that to us?
Yes, that is in caps, and it, but it says no general, city, administrative, or overhead costs. And then it adds already in, and it can't pay for positions already in place. So at the time the ballot, or the measure was passed, these positions did not exist. They have been, they are necessitated by the actual extension of the block watch programs.
To put a finer point on it, if I could, the language in particular is in reference to a supplanting clause. So it really is, the ballot was set up to ensure that the positions and the funding that came with that 1/10th percent increment did not go to supplant existing general fund costs. That's what the language is really directed at. And so these positions, again, as Patty mentioned, did not exist prior to the grant. They do not support or serve any other purpose other than the block watch group. So therefore, they should not truly be an extension of the general fund, or an assumed extension of the general fund.
Vice Mayor.
I would like to continue this item. I want to, I want to look into all of this. I wasn't aware of a lot of that language. So I would like to continue it and understand. I'm making a motion to continue.
Mr. Chair, I will second that, but pardon me. Are we doing this because of budget problems for next year?
That would be part of it, but again, Councilman Williams, Chairman Noakowski, members of the subcommittee, if you recall, part of our evaluation every year that we go through is making sure that we have proper alignment with general fund and all other things that are outside the general fund. So like any other position or any other program that we offer, we try to make sure that the general fund is only paying for its fair share of costs. These costs are not general fund costs. These costs exist exclusively for block watch. If there were no block watch program, again, I can't emphasize this enough, these positions would not exist. They serve no other general fund purpose. They serve no other police purpose other than supporting the block watch program. That's why we're doing this. There is an added benefit of helping the general fund, but that is not the intent. The intent is to make sure that there is an alignment with the general fund and the funds that it, the programs that it pays for.
I guess one of the disadvantages of being around for so long is the fact that I was part of the people who drafted this in the first place. And I meant the program has grown far beyond what we anticipated at the beginning. And the number of grants, having served on that committee, I know the work it is to go through all those grants and to make sure. I can't imagine being on the monitoring side. I will support the motion to continue this. But if it comes back to us, I think I could support this on a temporary basis for like three years to see if our budget turns around and if there's another way to fund these positions.
What I'd like to see is a job description in detail, what is these four individuals actually doing? Those workshops that you described, all that, so how's it benefiting on block watch? So we can have a clear picture, so that our block watch groups come to us, they're saying, what are these four individuals doing for us as block watch individuals? And with that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, and we'll continue until next month.
Mr. Chair, could we move, I believe it's what, item nine up? Take it out of order, please.
Absolutely. Do we have to have a motion on that? Should we just move it?
Move item nine.
Move, take it out of order.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, a second, to move item nine to the front of the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're on item number nine. And I think it's the judges and the presiding judge. Come on down. It's all yours, Judge.
Good morning. I think I'm on now. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee. Two of the members of our bench are here for you today at the reappointment process. And at this point, we would defer to the chair's pleasure as to how best to proceed.
What I'd like to do is just have maybe each of the judges just basically give us a little bit of their background and tell us about their position as a judge in the City of Phoenix.
All right. I'm Judge Nyquist, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm Judge Nyquist, and good morning, Chairman Noakowski and Councilwoman Williams and Councilwoman Pastor. I've been a judge for the City of Phoenix for seven years now. And during that time, I have to tell you that I really have enjoyed the position. I think the letter that I put in my packet really tells the whole story. It's intellectually stimulating for me. I feel that I get an opportunity to assist, help, and I hope transform people who appear in our courthouse. I remind those that appear in front of me often that they are members of our community. I also let them know the importance of domestic violence and other types of programs that are significant to this city. And I think the message I'm trying to get across, quite frankly, is that I care about you, this court cares about you, and the community cares about you. I come from very humble beginnings, grew up in a small town in the Midwest, moved to Arizona in 1990, and I was a City of Phoenix prosecutor. I worked for Judge Mundell for several years prior to becoming a public defender. Then I worked in private practice for about six years, and I loved the work. It's never dull, it's not easy, but I think it's for me, and I think it's my calling. I'm appreciative of the position and the opportunity to appear in front of you today, and I hope that you would give me another opportunity to be a judge in the City of Phoenix for the next four years. If you want to give me eight, I'll take it. Thank you.
Any questions for my colleagues, or?
I'll just make the comment that I read the backup material on you and that you are doing very well.
Thank you.
Having helped set the standards, and I greatly appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anything from our vice mayor?
The A, I could tell you last night, and it's just a conversation, last night I was trying to do a gymnastics move with my little one, and I got E for effort and P for participation. So.
Congratulations.
Possibly, I'm glad you're striving for the A.
I'm striving for the A.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
And just for the public to know, the judges go through about a seven different step process to be evaluated. They're evaluated from the jury themselves, the attorneys, and other judges. And all that information is gathered right here. And also, there is an outside group of advisors that advise us on approving that extra four years or not. And then there's all kinds of charts saying that this is the national average and local averages and stuff like that. So you're right on. So thank you. And we also get a list of all the training on an annual basis. And, you know, it seems like you keep up with all the updates and all that, so thank you for all your hard efforts and also your participation within the, within our community.
Thank you very much.
And being a part of the community. So with that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that this committee recommend to City Council to reappoint Judge Nyquist to a four-year term as judge of the Phoenix Municipal Court, ending on December 19, 2021.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Just four years, huh? All right.
I think that's all we're allowed.
All right, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries and passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy.
All righty, we're on to our next judge. Judge Robert Doyle?
Thank you.
All yours.
Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, it's also been along with Judge Nyquist my pleasure to be a member of the Phoenix Municipal Court. This is my 12th year with the court. As Judge Nyquist said, it's always interesting. We get to meet and work with the people of the City of Phoenix every day, and we appreciate the opportunity and the honor that's been granted to us. My background is very similar to Judge Nyquist, it's all in the materials, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be part of the Phoenix Municipal Court.
Any questions for my colleagues?
I have to make a couple comments, because looking through the packet, there seem to be some issues that put you at a lower standard than the average, which concerns me. Could you tell me what's going on?
Certainly. My Achilles' heel tends to be patience, there are times I'm not as patient as I should be in the courtroom. And I've taken the example of Judge Nyquist and some of my colleagues, worked with my supervisor, spoken to the presiding judge about it, made efforts to be more patient, calmer in the courtroom, and work better with the people that I'm dealing with. I've participated in programs through the Employee Assistance Program, and I'm currently signing up to participate in the city's Emotional Intelligence Program, I'll be starting that soon. This has been something that I've needed to work with my colleagues and on myself, and I continue to try and improve in this regard.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
So, just a question only, because I'm a teacher at heart. So is it more impulsive? Because I have a son that's impulsive.
Sometimes it is, yes, Councilwoman.
And it's, and it's, it's been very interesting to raise a son in this world that has impulsiveness, where kind of the brain is working faster, and then the process of how they speak out loud, it comes out as the brain is operating and you're processing out loud. And that is, I could tell, and I know, is a difficult skill to learn. And there are times where you just, I have to tell my son, think, stop in the motion, and breathe, give yourself that five-second breath, and breathe before you say something. But that's a skill that we have to practice all the time. I think I, at times, have that behavior too, and understand. But we also have to understand, and I also have to understand, that we're also part of the public and public service. And so sometimes when I react in an emotional, impulsive manner, I have to understand that perception-wise, it could be looked at very differently, and could be looked at a different way. And when we're trying to say, we're really trying to say positive items, but it ends up coming out in a very, not necessarily negative, but in a deliberate, truthful way, where sometimes others aren't prepared for the truth. And so sometimes we have to take steps back and say, how am I going to deliver this in a way that they can hear me? And I think that's probably what's happening in this whole piece. And so I'm glad to hear that you'll be going through training, I guess it is. But what helps me in to balance my life is really meditation, taking breath, and really taking that time for myself to process my thoughts, so that then when I'm ready, or I know I'm ready, going to face something, that I'm prepared to deliberately put my thoughts into actions. And so I understand the struggle.
You sound exactly like my counsel.
Yeah.
We've got another career going.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
All right, we have a card from the public, J.J. Johnson.
For the past 10 years, I've been a criminal defense investigator, working in Maricopa County, and there is perhaps no one who is frequently a greater critic of policy in the City of Phoenix. Over the time that I have, that my clients have appeared in Judge Doyle's courtroom, he has always treated them with courtesy, dignity, and respect. He has been firm but fair. I have not always agreed with decisions that he has made, but I understand how he arrived at those decisions. So I'm unsure of how he's been evaluated, but my experience with Judge Doyle is that he has definitely been positive and should be retained.
Thank you so much. Just looking at the report itself, I mean, there's some unfavorable comments from the public, there's some concerns about just this last year of all the training going on, and in the past years, there's very few courses that you were taking, and also activities, additional activities out in the community. I'd really like to see maybe some kind of a period where you can bring back to us and kind of help us correct some of these concerns that this evaluation shows us, and I believe that we have testimony from Mr. Johnson on how you're fair and you're a good judge, and I believe that sometimes we just have those little hiccups in lives, and we need to actually have some, a period of time to kind of fix that. So I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Chair, you've been with us for quite a while.
Thank you.
And you are working on issues, but I will tell you, based on the information we got, I'm not comfortable, my motion will be the reappointment for Judge Doyle be tabled, and that the consideration of Judge Doyle's reappointment come back to the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee after a period of six months, and we can note your improvements.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
So in six months, then we'll reevaluate, or look at, okay, second.
All righty, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, and we'll see you in six months. Thank you, Judge, for everything you're doing.
May I ask one question? In the, between now and the six months, what would we use to evaluate? How?
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Mayor, what we can certainly do is undertake again the process the Judicial Selection Advisory Board goes through, in which we actually solicit the input of those parties that appear in front of various judges. And essentially what we'll do is run that survey again, which looks at the same types of questions and asks the same questions, and then you'll have an opportunity to take a look at that.
And that's a fair comparison.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, no, I was just curious, or more of what will, it will be the same.
And let me tell you, this isn't uncommon for this committee to do this, we've done it in the past, where we allowed the presiding judge to work along with the judge themselves to kind of come up with a plan, and the presiding judge actually comes and reports to us on the outcome, and works really hard to do that, so thank you for taking that time and creating that kind of plan. And then it goes back to the committee, the judicial committee that makes those recommendations to us.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all your service. Now we're back to item number five. And the courts are still up here, all right. You know, I was just thinking, I'm sorry, if we move the budget up, and maybe the police officers and firefighters can leave, so we're not holding them up for the entire meeting. I think that's the only thing with public safety, is it? And fire also, right? So can we, I would like to move that item up.
Okay.
If there's a motion, that would be great. All right, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that, Judge. Your items are three in a row, so we'll go ahead and follow the budget. Basically, what we do is every month, we listen to the different budgets that we have throughout the City of Phoenix, making sure that we're good stewards with the budgets allocated for our public safety. So with that, it's all yours.
Good morning, Council Chairman Nowakowski and members of the Subcommittee. Jill Selaya with the Phoenix Police Department, and I'm here to give you a budget update through the end of September. Through the end of September, we have spent $165 million, and right now, we are on budget. For the month of September, we are about 3% higher than we were last fiscal year, but that has to do with a lot of, the incentives have been, some of the incentives have been restored in pension cost. Our top 10 expenditures, one thing I want to point out is our overtime. Our overtime is about $2 million less than what we were spending last year, so our department is really holding all of our employees accountable and trying to monitor our overtime on a monthly basis. And then for our revenues, we continue to still have revenues for grants, court awards, vehicle impound, false alarms, pawn shop, IGAs, and then our special events. And for last year, we received $8.4 million in grants, and year-to-date, we have received $3.5 million in grant funds. And with that, are there any questions? Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the Subcommittee. I'm Ken Lake, I'm with the Fire Department, I'll present their budget. So much like the Police Department, at 24, we've spent 24.2% of the budget at 25% of the year, so we're just tracking right on, right where we expect it this time. For the last three months, the expenditures are slightly up, and we'll get into some of the reasons why, but they're prospectively from personnel and pension cost. So looking at the top 10 in the salary line, there's a couple things that are noteworthy. Pension contribution to fire Tier 2 shows up, that was extracted or taken out of the pension contribution line, or it would show that that had increased, and that's, covers the difference between when employees are hired, so we're coming into the Tier 2 portion where we're actually starting to charge for that. The other one is the Industrial Insurance Program, it's went up slightly, again, those are numbers that are provided to us by either BNR or HR. And then lastly, in the line for constant manning fire, it's also went up at this point in the year, that has a lot to do with our recent response to the hurricanes, and those funds haven't been moved out of that line item to the grant, so that should come down as we move forward. And then revenues, we're tracking right where we think we should be, ambulance transport show a little bit down from last year, but overall should meet our expectation, and the dispatch fees and dispatch maintenance are cost recovery, and so those are right on track at this point. So that'll take any questions, if you have any.
On the industrial insurance premium, is that an annual?
Yeah, it's, well, it's ongoing monthly, so, it's part of the fringe benefit.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Chairman Nowakowski, Madam Vice Mayor, Subcommittee members, I'm Will Gonzalez from the Municipal Court. As you can see, we are year-to-date budget is on track. Our variance from last year is about 7.48, we are trending down from July, and as you look at our top 10 expenditures, the vast majority of the expenditures are consistently on employee cost. And then for the revenues, you will see there's a slight trend up now from last year, and the cap program continues to do quite well for the court. We're up to 12,000 over 12,000 participants in the program, and we are now over $21 million. And so it will continue to grow, we believe, and, as you know, meet the needs of our residents by getting their license taken care of.
Any comments?
Good job.
Yeah, great job. Just want to thank you, and it's so important that we understand when the budgets go up and down, and now that we're waiting for some grants, we understand where the firefighter's budget is kind of off a little bit, it'll be backing onto, on track, so thank you for those explanations. I'm talking about being back on track, we're back on item number five now.
We're just getting exercise this morning.
Mr. Chair, members of the Subcommittee, Don Taylor from the Phoenix Municipal Court, and with me is Will Gonzalez, the Court's Executive Administrator. And this item really is an outgrowth of a couple of things, but most recently, Councilwoman Williams questioned at the end of the last meeting regarding what I think is related to some news reporting earlier this summer about municipal courts in Arizona. There is a suggestion there in that reporting, and it's more than a suggestion, it's pretty overt, that the municipal courts in Arizona really cannot be fair and independent, primarily because of the way that municipal court judges are appointed by the council. It's important for the public to actually understand that the municipal courts, and I can only really speak for Phoenix here, but I will advocate for it in a wholehearted fashion, that the municipal courts really are independent agencies. And the reason that's important is so that people feel on a daily basis like they're getting a fair shake. So let's talk a little bit about the fact that the municipal court is an independent branch of city government. Now, nobody here needs a civics lesson, we all learned about the three branches of government and why that's important. Again, where it really matters, where the rubber hits the road with regard to city courts in Arizona and elsewhere, is the feeling of fairness that people get. People have to understand, when they come into the court, they're going to be treated fairly and equally under the law. So they need to understand, for example, that we do not work for the Police Department, we are not a rubber stamp for the Police Department or any other city enforcement agency, we don't even work for the City Manager's Office. If you look at an org chart of the city, and you can find it online for those who might look, at the very top is the public, which is who all of us who work for the city in any capacity report to. That's who we serve. And underneath that, there is the mayor and council, and devolving down from there, we have the City Manager's Office over virtually all of the operations in the city. And then what you have out here, out to the side, is the municipal court. And that's an important visual for people to understand, because people need to feel like when they come into court, they're going to be treated fairly, and like, for example, the City Manager's Office is not able to call up and say, you know, there's a person charged over there, it's got this going on, I'd really like for it to come out a certain way, or members of the council doing that. People need to feel like they are on an even footing. And the facts are, when you look at the way the court operates, that's absolutely true. And in fact, structurally, it's set up in a way that it really wouldn't be possible to happen in any other way. I will tell you that in the many years I have been associated with the court, I have never seen anything that smacks of the kind of interference that that recent news article was intimating might happen. Never had the instance where the court felt pressured by any political body in Phoenix or by any member of the City Manager's Office in any way with regard to any case, and importantly for the purposes of what these news articles were talking about with raising money, because the allegation, if you will, from that is that somehow the fact that city court judges are appointed by you makes them susceptible to pressure from you to raise money, to use the court as a way to raise money. And nothing could be further from the truth, particularly in Phoenix. An independent branch of city government, we actually have a whole host of written regulations that come to us out of the Arizona Supreme Court, and is overseen by the Administrative Office of the Courts, that guides our daily operations in a number of ways with regard to the use of computer technology, with regard to the collection of funds, the accounting of funds, the distribution of funds. The judges, as you know, as we just saw an example of, are appointed by the City Council. The judicial decisions of municipal court judges are subject to the appellate authority of the Superior Court. So an appeal out of our court goes across the street to the Superior Court, where a Superior Court judge decides the merits of that process. The judicial evaluation process, we don't need to spend a lot of time on it, because we just had a really good example of that. It begins with the Judicial Selection Advisory Board, who uses a number of metrics in order to determine how judges are doing on the bench. It then comes to the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee, and there's the opportunity to do what you just engaged in a few moments ago, and from here to the full council. It's important for people to understand, those are focused evaluations, I think, as we just saw. They're focused on knowledge of the law, how well someone knows the rules of procedure, how they apply it, are they acting fairly? And there's a hugely important component of that that has to deal with how they treat members of the public that appear in front of them. Is it politely? Is it with courteousness? Sometimes we have to do hard things, but that can always be done in a professional and kind manner. And that's what some of those things focus on very heavily, the treatment of the parties. It's hugely important, because the limited jurisdiction courts with our volume is where most of the public most of the public sees the face of the criminal justice system. It's not over at Superior Court. We have, for several years now, operated on what I have found to be one of the most important quotes that the Chief Justice put in the Fair Justice for All Task Force, that I was honored to be a part of for the last two years. And I'm going to read it to you. "Sanctions such as fees and fines should be imposed in a manner that promotes, rather than impedes, compliance with the law, economic opportunity, and family stability." Now, when the Chief Justice formulated that language a couple of years ago, there was a bit of a revolution that happened, because courts for a long time have not looked at all of that as part of their job. We're very serious about that being part of our job, so that although fines and fees are a normal part of the system, when the court actually imposes them, even when it has to, because it's a mandatory fine or fee set by the state legislature, we're very conscious of the fact that the effects that can have on people could actually be an impediment with economic opportunity and family stability. And so everything that we are trying to do is to be very conscious of that on the front end. And what's very interesting from the standpoint of, I, I think, the controversy raised by the articles about the independence of the courts, is that the closest thing to a suggestion I have heard from the council with regard to the imposition of the fines and fees has been aloud and clear, they should be fair, and it should follow this principle. And I remember very clearly, when we went through my appointment process two and a half years ago, there were several members of the council that were very concerned about that issue. Is it done in a fair manner? And are we doing it in a way that actually helps the community rather than harms them? I'm here to tell you, we have taken those principles to heart, that is the way that we operate on a, on a daily basis. Last thing I would say, and this is sort of the, you know, get down to, the down and dirty brass tacks, because there is sometimes a perception among the public that the court operates, traffic laws operate, as a way of the city making money. Well, if that's the case, it's a terrible business model, and we should all figure out who set it up many years ago. Because if you look, for example, at the last five years, the court brings in significantly less money to the general fund in the fines and fees that are imposed than it costs to actually run the court. I actually looked back to see if I could find a time in what we'll call recorded history, that the court actually made more money for the city than it costs to run it. I could not find it, I looked back thirty years, I finally got to nineteen eighty-six, and I didn't want to go dig through any more archives. But since that time, this has been a consistent theme, and this is essentially a policy decision that the council made a long time ago, that public safety is an investment, and that it's not here to make money. And so I think at the end of the day, that's something that's important for the public to understand and to feel good about. They really can feel comfortable that here in Phoenix, they have a court. They have a court where they are treated fairly, where they can come in and no matter what's arrayed against them on the side of the state, they'll get a fair shake. Probably no better illustration of that fact than, than that there are times when people are found not guilty in criminal cases. There are times when people are found not responsible for civil traffic violations. And it's important for people to understand, that was done fairly in each and every case. Every one of the judges on the bench takes an oath to uphold and obey the law, not to make money for the city, and they take that very seriously. Wanted you to have that as the background, I think it's also important for the public. I'd be happy to answer any questions from any members of the Subcommittee about those issues.
Any questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate this, Judge. When I saw that article, I, you know, started to hyperventilate, because I, I know the budget well enough to know that you did not make money for the general fund, but I believe in what you do, and I believe that you run an outstanding operation over there. You are fair. I think justice is served, and it serves this community very well. But knowing how things can happen in this state, I didn't want someone outside of Phoenix to pick up that article and think, oh, that's where Phoenix gets its money, and you roll accordingly, when it's not true. And so I thank you for going back and doing the research and doing this presentation, because this clearly states, justice is fair in Phoenix, and it's not a money-making operation, and I appreciate all you do. Thank you.
And Judge, I just really want to thank you for all those specialty courts that we have. I mean, we've had them from the homeless, that we're going to listen to a little bit, the Veterans Court, the Domestic Violence Court. So on the contrary, we actually invest more on helping people and coming up with solutions and, and making sure that those individuals don't face you in the future. So, thank you for all that hard work, and especially for our courts being the example and the, for other courts throughout the country. Thanks. Oh, we do have one card, I'm sorry. Leonard Clark.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. Well, nothing, Mayor's not here, so. The Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to disrespect, thank you. Thank you for letting me speak. I have had personal experience with the court system, and I, as a normal citizen, I, you know, can't get any more normal than I am, because, you know, I can't afford to get tickets all the time. But I will tell you that my experience has been positive, and I will let you know, though, if it starts happening, and I really appreciate the council looking at this, the Subcommittee, and particularly the good council member from District One. That is, that impresses me, and that you would look at it fairly. But I personally had an experience about six years ago with the Occupy movement, and we had a former mayor and a former city manager. And the ACLU, of course, took my case, and thank you to the ACLU. I know a lot of people don't like that name, but we were peaceably demonstrating legally and constitutionally at Margaret T. Hans Park, and we were arrested, I still believe, wrongfully, but beside the point. We went to the court, and the judge was very professional, and then, of course, dismissed with prejudice. I'm not sure if the statute of limitations has passed, it's been about six years, but the judge did dismiss the charges, and I mean, you know what, the judge could have thrown the book at us, you know, because there were some, maybe some angry people at the time in city government. So, I'm just telling you from my own personal experience, except for the riot in the paddy wagon, where they left the air conditioning off, they said it was an accident, but this court did treat myself fairly. So I will let you know in a heartbeat, if I start, you know, seeing that that's not the case. But I'm here to let all of my friends know, too, that personally, as an activist, I mean, that's when a court really comes in, that's one of the most critical moments. Are they going to treat somebody fairly? And if they treat an activist fairly, who's not always speaking what the city leaders want, I think that's a good implication of the court system being fair. Thank you.
For the record, I think the Mayor was out there with you all, too, on that one time. Phil Gordon.
Chris McBride, Judge over at the City Court, noting that your docket is heavy this morning, I'm going to short, sweet, to the point. I have present with me today, the Assistant Director of the Public Defender's Office, Mr. David Fuller, Assistant City Prosecutor Tina Solomon, and the actual Coordinator for the Regional Homeless Court, Ms. Karen Cook. And I know that you're in constant contact with your constituents, I know that you're well aware, the level of distress experienced by many members of our community, and I know that you daily face intractable, thorny, intricate issues. I'm happy to give you good news, and that is that the Regional Homeless Court continues on its core mission of providing restorative justice to some of the most deserving members of our community, those that have struggled, clawed, fought their way back, and have restored themselves. And, I think we have a clicker here, we did provide some information in terms of the purposes of the court, as well as some numbers. And in the year two thousand and sixteen, you can see the number of individuals that were sought, the number of cases that were resolved, and additionally, in August of last year, or this year, record number of individuals seen. The thought that is always with me when we review numbers, is that these metrics really don't reflect probably one of the greatest actions that, that court and its participants create, and that's the restoration of dignity and the return of members that were lost to families, neighborhoods, and to our community. Now, I review many, all of the applications for the Regional Homeless Court, and the actual application itself is fairly sterile, but accompanying it is a letter from the social service provider that details in some degree the various steps that the people have taken. And although the language is sometimes terse and pithy, the clear inference, as you read it, they had stayed at Vista Colina, or the Potter House, or the other institutions that are well-known to those of us in the city, is that quite often, these individuals were themselves often victims. And this presents a unique challenge to the participants in the court, and we have present today Ms. Solomon, who, as a member of the Law Department, part of her duties are to coordinate the prosecutor's office's actions towards the applicants, and it's a very difficult task, because among her other duties is the ethical obligation to be Minister of Justice, and Ms. Solomon takes that very seriously. I'm just going to ask her to give you a brief overview of the Law Department's continuing involvement in the ongoing success of the program. Ms. Solomon?
Thank you, Judge McBride. Good morning, Chairman Nowakowski, and members of the Council. Again, my name is Tina Solomon, and I represent the City Prosecutor's Office, and the City Prosecutor's Office is very excited to be part of the Regional Homeless Court. And I have to tell you, from a prosecutor's perspective, ordering to have a person walk into the courtroom with one expectation, and then be surprised to know that not only their defense attorney, but also the judge and the prosecutor are supportive of their efforts. And those efforts are substantial. These folks are committed to changing their lives, and you'll see, and if I can have the clicker back. You'll see, in two thousand and sixteen, they have completed over a combined total eighty thousand five hundred and twenty-eight service hours. Now, those are hours not only to better themselves, but their families, their neighborhoods, and our communities. And as Judge McBride alluded to, the City Prosecutor's Office is very committed to victim rights, and we recognize that many of these candidates have been victims themselves. And going through the Regional Homeless Court gives them the opportunity to empower themselves and make positive changes. So in conclusion, the City Prosecutor's Office is very proud to be a part of this, work with Mr. Fuller, and the court, and both our, our partners, the public and private sector, to help people resolve the cases, restore themselves, and move forward with their lives. So thank you.
Ms. Solomon is a very experienced, very skilled, and a very hard-working individual, and the city is also fortunate, the Assistant Director, Mr. Fuller, has taken upon himself to assume the duties of an advocate on behalf of those who often would otherwise remain voiceless and unheard. Mr. Fuller, could you just share some brief experience with the Subcommittee?
Thank you, Judge. Chairman Nowakowski, Vice Mayor Pastore, Councilwoman Williams. I often say that the third Tuesday of the month is the happiest day of the month. That's when we do Homeless Court. So you've heard about numbers, you've heard about cases. I'm there every, every month, dealing with folks that, but for the grace of God go I. And these are the people that have risen out of their dilemma. So I know that you guys hear a lot, a lot about folks that are homeless that maybe don't bring such cheerful news to you, but I see these people every month who are striving and thriving. Let me tell you about one particular person. Ms. H., she was referred to me by a woman who works for Loadstar, who I affectionately call a saint. And, and she is, she's a case manager who is just, goes above and beyond the call of duty. And before I forget, I want to say that it is really a privilege to work with Judge McBride, Tina Solomon, and Ms. Cook. This really is a positive thing that you're doing. So, back to Ms. H., though, she was referred to me to try and reinstate her driver's license. She had been in the accounting profession for many, many years, and her problems with depression and addiction came later in life, and they were a result of her becoming widowed, and then in that very same year, she lost her mom. And her, her life took a spiral downward. She had some legal issues that had arisen that led to her being incarcerated, in addition to fines that she had been unable to pay relating to her driver's license. So, I tried, I tried to help her out with that. She, her background was, she got clean and sober, and after graduating a treatment program, and she was residing at a faith-based sober living facility, she was unable to find employment that reflected her education and experience. She was an accountant, but she couldn't find any employment because of those things. And not having a driver's license led her to have to take a bus to an IHOP, International House of Pancakes, to work. And so, to shorten the, the long story, is we finally got her license back. And Ms. H. had numerous, numerous, numerous community service hours behind her, and as a result of that, we got her license back, she regained her driving privileges, she got a, a job in an administrative position that more adequately reflected her background, she was no longer underemployed. And now, she has a car, she has her own apartment, and her life is a thousand times better. So thank you for allowing me to help out at Homeless Court, it's a great place.
And finally, I'm very happy to actually bring you, because it's kind of rare in these things, the person actually does a lot of the heavy lifting, okay? And that's Ms. Karen Cook. And the county was very fortunate to have acquired her services after an extensive interviewing process. And Ms. Cook, could you tell us a little bit about what's going on with the Regional Homeless Court from the county perspective?
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Chairman Nowakowski, and members of the Subcommittee. If you'll take a look at the next slide, you'll see that in August of this year, we heard sixty cases. This is a record number of cases for us, and we are hoping to continue breaking records by increasing the number of clients we see in Homeless Court. Our goal for the future is growth. We know that there are plenty of potential clients out there that are eligible and would be good candidates for Homeless Court. We want to reach out to them and their case managers to inform them of what potential Homeless Court could hold for them. We do this by offering in-person trainings, where we help our program providers identify what clients qualify, as well as having a presence at local community events. We're also hoping to increase our web presence by having a social media presence soon. Homeless Court is one of the best programs to come out of Phoenix, and we really appreciate Phoenix's leadership and find them to be an enormous benefit to Maricopa County.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman, you know, one of the most recognized and often misunderstood statements is that the poor will always be with us, and I'm not a textual scholar who can correctly parse that, but I do believe that it's actually a call to all of us to open our hearts and extend our hands to the most deserving of the longest-suffering members of our community, and as the other participants here have indicated, I believe it's a hallmark of the city, its policies and its perspective, that you provided the resources and continue to provide the resources, and that the employees of your respective departments take these duties on and carve the time out of their day to be able to provide this. I'm going to stop, but I'd also like, while I'm on the record, to make a public acknowledgement of a very humble and self-effacing individual who has never received any acclamation or acknowledgement for his participation in the Homeless Court. Mr. Will Gonzalez, your Executive Administrator of the Court, provided the intellectual spark along with three hundred individuals that led to the formation of the court. His skill set and knowledge remains a constant source of assistance to the court, and so, he's probably getting ready to throw something at the back of my head, because I believe that by his very nature, he is. So, I want to go on the record thanking Mr. Gonzalez personally, on behalf of all the participants in that court. So thank you. Do you have any questions that we might be able to assist you with?
Any questions for my colleagues?
I have one question, and, and I don't know if I'm getting it confused in the, in the process. Is this where you work with the city police, our rope officers?
No, ma'am.
Okay, that's why, that's where I'm getting confused.
You have different court models, you have restorative justice, you have therapeutic courts. The Regional Homeless Court follows up with people who have been through services with their providers.
Got it.
And so their cases... And so, their cases are such that they're the final impediments to the restoration to society. But they are inevitably and invariably must be, they're clean, they're sober, they're housed, and they're employed frequently. So, no, the other model would be more of a therapeutic court, such as what is done with mental health perhaps and whatnot. But that is not the model for the Regional Homeless Court.
Okay. That's what I was like, okay, I know I'm getting it confused because I know kind of the other model. And I was like, wait a minute, is this, what world am I living in at this moment? So, thank you, that's where I was, you added clarity. But I'm assuming, just because both models are working with the same population, and eventually, I'm hoping that both models, well, obviously, this one is working, but the models will restore justice in the sense of dignity and to those that are in the court system, and understand what the needs are for them to thrive. And so, I think kind of them are very similar in the sense, because they connect services also to those individuals. So, that's why I was like, wait, this is very similar but yet different. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
We have one card, Mr. Leonard Clark, on homeless courts.
Thank you again. It is so very good to hear that you're speaking on this. And I'm glad, because a lot of our fellow citizens and residents can't be here, you know, because of that great decision that was made in 1963 of Gideon versus Wainwright. I feel, and what I'm hearing here is, really warms my heart. I worked at an IHOP, as a matter of fact, as a dishwasher for some years, and that's how I learned Spanish. But to know that there is a public defender, and that especially for homeless, our homeless brothers and sisters, it's very hard for them to get to the court. And this is something that I want to thank the council. I'm not sure specifically who pushes harder on it, but the fact that you're all addressing this issue, I think it's a great idea. I'm hoping, I have a lot of hope, that the new homeless things that are going on to help the homeless in the city of Phoenix, I'm hoping that Councilman Noakowski's suggestions to the other cities will also be taken as well to help, because Phoenix can't do it all. But this homeless court, I think, is an excellent idea. We have many other cities around the country, especially their district attorney offices, counties where they don't have enough public defenders. So, I think this is a very good idea. I might want to come down there and witness, I've been watching the federal court lately, but come down there and watch the homeless court. I want to thank the people, especially on the nice lady, helping her resolve her issues, because they're extenuating and mitigating circumstances. And this chopping, the baby-in-half ideal of some conservatives just doesn't work. The law needs to be administered with extenuating and mitigating circumstances. And I'm glad that the Sixth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment is being observed in the city of Phoenix. Thank you so much.
I just want to thank you for all your hard work. You can feel the passion that you all have. And you know, this is what I call that Team Phoenix approach, where we bring all the resources together, the city, to make things happen. And it's a great idea from our staff to create these types of courts. And now, we have a new program called Phoenix Cares, that's just going to enhance those services and helping out our community. So, once again, thank you for being that role model for the rest of the country of how they should be treating our homeless individuals that go to court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Councilwoman. Good to see you all. Good day.
Now, we're on item number seven.
Keystone event. It's all yours.
Chairman Noakowski, Councilwoman Williams. Oh, I'm sorry. Once again, Gary Kula, the Director of the Phoenix Public Defender's Office, to talk about the Keystone Program. You know, the Public Defender's Office is involved with the specialty courts, homeless court, Veterans Court, Mental Health Court, the Veterans Stand Down. And one of the things that we see is that, you know, there's resources for these individuals. And we see these individuals come through the courts, and we provide them with valuable services, you know. But one of the things is that when we're dealing with these individuals, we know that the best way for them to succeed and not reoffend is to have a support system in place. And we know that, you know, at the end of the day, it's family members who are staring at the ceiling at night, wondering, you know, where do they turn? What do they do? How can they help this person with a mental health issue? How can they help this person and their family who's homeless? How can they help someone who they think might be abusing opioids? And so, a decision was made, and we reached out to the ASU College of Law, Victoria Ames, one of the deans there, to hold an event where we would help families put together all the resources that are out there, the social service agencies, the government agencies, the crisis intervention teams with the police department, the legal community, and bring them all together one day for the first time, so that families could come and take advantage of all these different services. So, we held the event at the ASU College of Law. We brought attorneys in, the attorneys helped families fill out guardianship papers, they helped them do access applications, they did power of attorneys, we had Superior Court there, they helped with filling out forms that family members had to go through the legal process. We had representatives of the specialty courts, the criminal courts, we had, the Phoenix Prosecutor's Office was there, we had representatives in the Maricopa County Public Defender's Office there, and State Bar, Community Legal Services, Maricopa County Bar. And then, we also had social service providers. We had David's Hope, the Beacon Group, Mercy Maricopa, all of them coming together, along with government agencies. We had the City of Phoenix Housing Department, we had the Department of Economic Security, and we also had interpreters there if family members needed assistance. John Daniels from our office arranged interpreters from Phoenix Children's Hospital and Maricopa Integrated Healthcare. And we held the event at the ASU College of Law. So that families could come in, we also offered them classes. We offered them classes, how to detect opioid use, if they have that concern in their family, how to navigate the mental health system, how to deal with DES as far as getting the benefits they deserve. We also had the Crisis Intervention Team officers from Phoenix, Mesa, and Scottsdale, because we know one of the hardest decisions a family has to make is whether or not to call 911 on a family member. And we all know that that's a very serious decision. So, we had those officers there so that they could talk to families, explain, you know, what can be done, what should be done, so that they can help the situation as opposed to making it more stressful and more difficult for the individual with challenges. You know, our goal in putting together the event was to bring everyone together. It hadn't been done before, and we thought families deserved that. They had, they deserved the right to have all these services brought together. And we took that first step. We had approximately 125 people show up, we met our goal, and we're looking forward to doing future events. We're going to do an event either in South or Southwest Phoenix, and we're going to focus on Spanish-speaking families, so that we can bring those services out to the community. So, it was a good first step, it was a good day for Phoenix, it was a great day for some of those families.
Any questions? Councilmember Williams?
I applaud you for doing this. I think one of the struggles that every family has is, I don't think there's a family untouched somewhere that doesn't deal with this problem in one facet or another. Finding those resources is the challenge. And I know they come to me, and I can list off a few of them, but on a package, I can't. I think what you're doing is so valuable to this community, because if we're going to change and help people make their lives better, so that they are functional, that they are truly good family members, this is exactly what we need to do more of. What I would ask is, is that you give us more notice, let us help publicize, and get the word out that these things are available. This is the key to success, long-term support makes all the difference in the world.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you very much.
Yes. You know, we had DES as a partner, we had Sharon Jones, Sharon Pearson, and Dawn Jones from the Department of Economic Security. And they were some of the key players, because there's so many individuals that rely on those five divisions within DES. And to have them there, to have them bring their families out, it made a significant difference in the quality of service they were able to receive.
Vice Mayor?
I don't know if this would work, but is it possible to build like a resource guide with all those agencies that participated? And I don't know who would be responsible for that.
Yeah. My snare past story.
Now that I'm asking, I'm like, okay, how would we go about doing that? But just like, as mentioned, for families that are in struggle of, first of all, understanding and dealing with their loved one, and then to really, there are no very limited resources. And then, when you go to those services, sometimes we can't help you, it's full, and then you just feel like you're deflated, and you still need some hope. And so, I know there's a lot of resources out in our community, but it's just a matter of being able to, I guess, organize or have something in hand to say, okay, I have this, I can copy this, and, you know, let's try here, or let's go here. And then, I mean, because I've been in those situations where I have been walking the struggle with families, and seeing at times where the struggle is that the resources aren't available, and there's nowhere to turn to. And so, it's nice to be able then to say, okay, let's go to the next one. So, I don't know, I don't know if it's possible or not, but just in general, services all across the board, everybody faces this at different levels, I guess.
Vice Mayor Prestor, we have a website that we're developing, so we'll be putting some of the resources on there. We also were fortunate to have Dora Brown from the Recovery Empowerment Network, and Mary Lou Burnsick from David's Hope. And they have a network of resources. And we're going to be working with them, along with the other agencies, and also some of the law offices, so that families have the resources. So, it's not just twice a year that they can look on our website and get that information.
That'll be awesome, and it would be awesome for us to know, in order, when we're out with our constituents, to be able to go, go to this website, boom, boom, boom. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank you. I know the 125 families that were impacted are probably thanking you all also. We have eight different districts in the city of Phoenix. It'd be great to see an event like this in each of our districts where we can actually refer individuals. I know that the Public Defender's Office is overwhelmed with cases and work, but this is a program that would really help out in the community, maybe in the future. Maybe we could start off with one a quarter in four different districts, and in the following year, vice versa, you know, districts that didn't get it, they can handle that also. But I think it's a very, very important program. All those services in one place, it's a one-stop shopping for individuals, and even including the arts community, and getting families involved, it's just incredible.
Thank you, Chairman. We're very fortunate that Rosemarie Dombrowski, the poet laureate for the city of Phoenix, she was there, and she presented the class on the arts, and how poetry, and that there are other ways to deal with distress for families. And that was a very much appreciated class, that there was that, you know, approach taken by her. And as far as reaching out to the communities, our next target area is South or Southwest Phoenix, just because we want to bring in more Spanish-speaking families. We want this next event to be primarily in Spanish. So, we already started working with the interpreters and a different agency, so that when we offer these classes, that they'll be in Spanish. And we don't want to just use interpreters this time, we want to have Spanish classes, so that the families feel more comfortable coming out, and that they're better able to grasp the information that's being presented.
Great job. Thank you so much. Councilmember Williams?
Several times you have mentioned your website. What is your website?
It's Keystone AZ Keystone.org.
AZ Keystone.org.
That's correct. It's still under construction, we're working on it, it's there, but we're going to be making it better. And with this next event coming up in either March or April, we'll be working to improve it, so that it's ready to go by that date.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, we're on item number 10 and 11, I think we kind of combined them, right?
We'll review for you the state and federal agendas for the Government Relations Department this year for the state legislative term, and for our ongoing federal relations work. So, today, we will start with John Wayne Gonzalez, our manager of the state program.
Thank you. So, subcommittee members, going through the guiding principles, as we start off with every session, just to remind those people, remind the subcommittee members, as well as members of the audience and people watching online, we have four pillars of our overall guiding principles in the state area. Those are to oppose unfunded mandates from the state, preserve our local control, to protect shared revenues. And for people in the audience, and for people watching online, that's just, those are monies that have been voter-approved, that are shared by the state with the cities to help with our operations. And also, of great importance, is protecting our water resources, as we continue to deal with Lake Mead and Colorado River issues and shortages and drought conditions, making sure that Phoenix is well-positioned to be represented and protect our water resources. Those are our guiding principles that we've recommended over the last several years and continue to recommend. In legislation, what we're looking at is, for your first item, is the public officer training funding issue. So, in a nutshell, the ASPOST, which is the organization which licenses the police officers, they receive funding from the state, and a lot of, some of that funding comes back to the city to help pay for police officer training. Over the last five years, what's happened is that the state has seen a decrease in those funds. Matter of fact, just last year alone, they saw a 35% decrease, which is about $2.5 million lost to ASPOST, meaning that they don't have the revenues potentially going forward to help pay for us to train police officers at our academy. What's also of note is that the Phoenix Police Department not only runs the academy, owns the academy, and trains our officers, but we also train other officers from other jurisdictions from around the state of Arizona. So, we really are a very inclusive group when it comes to working with other law enforcement agencies to support them. So, what staff is recommending is that we go to the legislature, governor's office, and try to find a way to make up the shortfall in the funding, because if we don't, not only is the city of Phoenix going to have to find the money somewhere, the monies we didn't have to worry about to train our police officers, to meet our goals, but also other law enforcement agencies are going to have to be in the same place, where they're going to have to try to find monies to train their officers. And so, that is a request that we're asking from mayor and council for approval. The other issue is 911 infrastructure, it's an ongoing issue. This has been an issue for the last three years before the mayor and council. I can tell you for the subcommittee that we've actually done, we've actually seen the state provide more resources in the last year and a half than they ever have before in the previous five years. So, we've made inroads with that. A lot of our infrastructure is basically being funded by the state. And to remind those people in the audience and those watching online, what happens is that every cell phone account, landline account, telephone account in Arizona has a 20-cent month fee. That money is collected by the state, and then it's shared throughout the state to pay for just technology for capital improvements to the system. Phoenix is the biggest, has the biggest system. Phoenix Police Department is the primary receiver of phone calls that get then diverted to the other agencies if needed. So, this computer technology is so important, especially now that we're going to text to 911 in the region, these monies are so important. So, while we've made improvements in getting more money and getting projects funded, there are some ideas of trying to get more money into the fund without raising taxes. And one of those is just changing the law, so that you don't have to raise taxes or the fee, but then, the way the law is written, the 20 cent a month fee is only on a bill, it's not per device. it's not per device. So therefore, if you add that to device, the 20 cents, so you've got family plans that maybe have three phones or five phones to a landline, so now you may be adding another 40 cents to a dollar, but all that money goes to important infrastructure needs for public safety. And then I'll go on with that, that's another item.
So when you say per device, so say my family has five devices, I have one bill, but five devices, so you're saying the five devices would then be charged to 20 cents?
Mr. Chair and Vice Mayor, so the idea, and this is a study that came out of the Maricopa Association of Governments, is that currently state law only provides that you can only charge 20 cents to the bill, the monthly bill.
Right.
An idea is that you could charge the 20 cents, this is something that wasn't thought of when the law was passed about 19 years ago, per device. So you would have 20 cents for each phone that's on the list. So if you have five phones, instead of the 20 cents a month, now you're looking close to a dollar.
Dollar.
But all that money has to go into this fund that then pays for this important technology that we need for our police and fire equipment.
And when it was first put in place, the fee per bill was?
When the law was implemented, it was in 2001, it was 37 cents a month per bill. And then it ratcheted down in the late 2000s to 28 cents, and then it finally landed before we hit 2010 to 20 cents. To be fair to the legislators at that time, matter of fact, to be on the record, city of Phoenix was the leader in getting that fee added. With the authority of the mayor and council, we were actually successful in getting a fee which was not there before to help supplement that, so we were leaders in that to get that done. At the time, legislators thought that cellphones were going to explode like you wouldn't believe, that we wouldn't need that 37 cents. But the reality is that the way the law was written, theoretically they're right, but it's only per bill, it's not per phone. So it's a nuance of the language that they didn't see some 17 years ago.
Right, because 20 years ago, we didn't have family plans, they weren't anticipating to start bundling family plans, and 20 years ago was a very select few that could afford the cellular phone, and now it's replaced the landline. So I could see why it was written that way, and it just needs to be modernized to today.
And Mr. Chair, Vice Mayor, we totally agree with that.
Thank you.
And then an item, some other items that we're continuing to fight for, we always fight for in the budget. Again, we receive Internet Crimes Against Children funding, that's something that the city worked in partnership with the state to get those monies a couple of years ago. That fund right now is about $1 million that comes in, and what happens, that money goes to the Phoenix Police Department, and then they use a major portion of it for investigations of those crimes, but they also offer grants to other agencies around the state. And our police department works very closely with other folks when it comes to finding those child predators that are distributing this information online, and they're doing a good job of arresting people. Another item is the, that we're going to definitely always defend, is the ACTIC Center, that's the Arizona Counter Terrorism Information Center. And although it's technically owned by the state, the function, the police department over, the Phoenix Police Department over the years pretty much staffs it, the majority of the staffing comes from Phoenix Police Department. It receives an annual 1.4 million a year in funding, which is what it needs to operate every year, and so we just want to make sure that that money also is staying in place, that doesn't get changed. Another thing is we're always on the lookout for funding for the Arizona Hospital because of the security breaches that might happen there. So we always make sure that they get their funding, or at least support their funding requests to make sure that the monies they receive are there so they can make sure that the people who are in the Arizona Hospital are not, that are not supposed to be escaping, are not escaping, that they're staying in. And those are some of the major areas of funding that we continue to fight for and represent and defend. And then, before we go on, I think this is the last one. Before I go on, just to remind, I know members have heard this before, but for members in the audience and members that are watching this online, the state is facing about at least a $100 million deficit, and so there's different reasons why they landed there, but that they're there right now. And unless the revenues don't change, they're going to have to find ways to either, you know, cut funds or sweep funds or what have you. So as these funds are so important, we definitely will make sure that we are advocating to make sure that these funds are held whole and that they don't sweep the funds for these important purposes. And so just some challenges we have to deal with. And with that, if there are no questions on the state agenda?
I'm just curious, so there are 100 million in the hole, and possibly in the future, we're going to have some taxes cut. What would that, I know that you probably guys can answer this, but prediction-wise, what would that look like when we're going to have a tax cut for the future?
Mr. Chair and Vice Mayor, so although they're facing at least a $100 million hole, actually it could be up to $200 million if they don't do some other changes to be honest. It could be anywhere from 100 million to 200 million. There is talk of tax cuts, however, at the same time, whatever discussion has to happen has to happen with members of legislature, they have to get still the votes to get that passed, and they still have to score it. Again, the state cannot run a deficit, they can't carry, you know, they can't do that, they have to have a balanced budget. How they get there, if they do tax cuts, I'm not sure, but that has to go through an entire process where they're going to have to figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Okowski and members of the subcommittee, so I will touch on the federal agenda. So as you guys have heard before, we will have two guiding principles for the federal agenda, the first being promoting fiscal sustainability, which means pushing to make sure the city has parity in all of their federal funding that we receive, and then also defending the city against unfunded federal mandates, and then also protecting local authority. So pushing for those federal policies that empower the local communities and do not preempt local decision-making power. So on behalf of the police department, we will be advocating for a number of different grant programs that we have done in the past as well. The first being the Community Oriented Policing Services Grants, or COPS grants, these are those grants that help the police department put new police officers on the streets and help fund them for the first few years. The second is the Office of Justice Program Grants, these are grants that help with different policing initiatives, whether it be backlog reduction in DNA, or Internet Crimes Against Children, or other programs like that. We will also be pushing for grants that increase police technology enhancements, these will be body cameras on patrol officers, trying to equip all patrol cars with 4G antennas, currently they have 3G antennas, and ensuring that all police officers have smartphones on them so they can have the latest information in the quickest amount of time, among other improvements. And then the last is, this is a new request, the department is going to be looking for a grant to try to increase the evidence storage for sexual assault kits. They do test all sexual assault kits that the department has, but they have so many at the current moment that they have to keep them off-site, bring them to the lab where they're tested, and then take them off-site again for storage. So if they were able to increase their storage on the testing site itself, it would make the process more efficient. On behalf of the fire department, we will also be pursuing a number of different grants. All of these grants are under the FEMA agency, the first being the SAFER Grant, that's a grant that the fire department uses to increase personnel within the department. AFG grants are grants that are used by different departments for equipment that is utilized by the department. The Fire Prevention and Safety Grants, those are grants that either allow the fire department to go out in the community and talk about prevention tactics with different community members and/or implement different prevention measures in the community. And the last is the Urban Search and Rescue, those are grant dollars that are able to be used for those emergency responders that are within the fire department. Next is the Homeland Security Grants that we will be going for. There are two different grant programs that we pursue in the Homeland Security Program. The first is the Urban Area Security Initiative, this is a competitive grant program that we pursue, and these are grants that are either used for the prevention of terrorism activities or ensuring the city has the resources needed to react to either a terrorist event and/or a natural disaster.
You know, I have a question on that.
Yes, sir.
I don't believe we're getting our fair share when it comes to that, being so close to the border and also with all the major events that we put on. Phoenix isn't, or the state of Arizona is not really getting their fair share, so how can we actually team up with the congressional delegation, our senators, to make sure in the future those funds aren't dropping, but they're actually growing?
And one of the tactics that we will do moving forward too is working more as a region to ensure that the region itself is getting as many tax dollars as possible, because like you said, with certain events, and when they occur, it's the entire region that benefits, so we want to ensure that the region is pulling as many dollars as possible. And then the state Homeland Security Grant Program is, that's distributed on a population basis, and that's distributed to the state, and then we get our share as part of a region of the state.
Is the Urban Area Security Initiative, is that the one that we were in a certain ranking, and then at a certain point, we dropped from 10, we moved from the 1 to 10, and then they added, I think, I want to say more states or more cities to it, such as San Diego? And then that's now, we rank midway?
And we did, we were able to push back and get moved back up slightly in that ranking, but we are continuing to pursue to be as highly ranked as possible.
So this is the grant that then, that you're speaking about regarding that they don't include the border in this ranking?
Exactly. And Mr. Chairman, Vice Mayor, and that's where we are pursuing and continuing to try to have those conversations with Homeland Security on the fact that that should be included, and the higher the ranking is, the more likely your grants are to be approved.
And I think those, we need to include the spring training and also all the college football games that we have here in the state of Arizona, especially within the Maricopa County area. I think that's one of the things that weren't included that we need to include, how it's more of a regional approach.
The next agenda item is for the prosecutor's office, and that's specialty courts. We do advocate for grants at the federal level to help fund those specialty courts. I know you heard about the homeless court now. We also have one, a veteran court, behavioral health court, and a domestic violence review court as well on that topic. And then the next agenda item is from the Regional Wireless Cooperative, this is not a new item, but an item we're continuing to pursue. This is the Public Safety Microwave Radio Interference Higher Ground LLC would like to take some of the band within the 6G band that is used by emergency services to communicate with each other. There are concerns from the Regional Wireless Cooperative that this could interfere with radio communications that emergency services use, like police and fire during an emergency. They have sent in a waiver to the FEC, we have voiced our disapproval or concerns with that waiver. The FCC has not acted yet, so that's why it's still on the agenda and will continue to monitor that. The next topic is domestic violence programs and funding. The city advocates on behalf of a number of different departments to ensure that funding is either leveled or increased within the Violence Against Women Act, the Family Violence Prevention Services Act, and the Victims of Crime Act. These funds not only help prevent these crimes, but also help provide funds for those victims to receive care in shelters and the Family Advocacy Center located in the city, and then are also used to try to increase the city's response to those and try to react as quickly as possible when those events occur.
Mr. Chair, on that point, are there grants available to help staff these specialty courts to increase the numbers? We have plenty of people that would be eligible to go through the court if we had the capacity to handle it.
And, Mr. Chairman and Councilwoman Williams, we are continuing to pursue those funds. Sometimes those funds, you can kind of, if you focus on the topic itself, you can use those funds for the court, and it's not maybe at Department of Justice, so we are trying to get more creative in that way.
Thank you.
And the other thing, we just talked about a great program, the Keystone Event, that we had at ESU Law School, and basically the Public Defender's Office, bringing all those resources, it was just from the city of Phoenix, but it was throughout Maricopa County. I wonder if there's any type of federal funds that, with this whole regional approach to providing services to individuals, and even if we're on the borders of some of these neighboring cities, that it includes those cities to participate?
Mr. Chairman, we'll be sure to pursue that. There are two top, other slides that were not in the CCR but will be in the full CCR that will go to city council next week that I did want to bring up because we're here in the subcommittee, and it would have been if we had time. The first is immigration reform and DACA recipients. I do have the proposed language that would be in the CCR on this topic. I did want to make the members aware, everything but the last sentence of this item is from the agenda item that was approved in 2013, 14, 15, and 16 on immigration reform. The last sentence of the item refers directly to DACA recipients because of the topic and its visibility at the current moment.
Tell me what DACA is.
Deferred Action.
So what's that mean?
It is those children that are, children that have been brought here that do not have legal status currently, but that, and then to be into the Deferred Action Program, they would have had to have either been enrolled in school or been a graduate of high school or be in military duty itself.
Okay, is there an age limit on that?
Yes.
And what would that be?
I believe the current program is 15 and under when they were brought to the country, but I can go back and verify that for you.
And how, maximum age, do they still qualify to follow in that program?
They would still, they would still be allowed in that program if they were younger than 15 when they were brought in, and they either graduated high school and/or college or enlisted in the military.
Or if they're continuing education through a university or so.
So if they're active, yeah, if they're active in their education and are active, they have the ability to have a work permit, so they are working, and they are pursuing, they're in the workforce and pursuing their career.
They have to, they have to be born by 1981, and then there's no maximum age if they're pursuing the pursuits.
So you can be 40 years old and still, as long as you're, in my mind, I always thought this was more for, when I say younger, I'm 20s, whatever, maybe even 30s, but I guess that's where I'm headed, I don't quite understand.
We can, we'll get, we'll get complete clarification on it for you.
You know how easily I get confused, frankly.
Yeah.
No, because I, you know, I think that's fair, and I really think that the injustice is, is no one has ever created a national policy to address all this. And, you know, but I really want to know what I'm talking about and know the details.
We'll have a, for policy next week, we'll have a complete definition and we'll share it beforehand with you.
And then the last item is the bump stock ban item that was raised because of the civilian petition at last.
One more.
Sorry. At formal. And this item would just recommend that the city track and pursue federal legislation that bans any firearm accessories that convert a semi-automatic firearm into a quasi-fully-automatic weapon.
I think this is what you sent me before.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, Clark Prinsell, government relations.
Any other questions on the items?
I have a question about item one, or body-worn cameras. In reading this, it says that there's approximately 300 body-worn cameras. I thought we had voted on body-worn cameras for every police officer, or we voted on body-worn cameras for, it was part of the CPTI, and we went through the whole process and we voted. So I need, yeah, maybe over five years, was it three years or five years? So Milton, can you give me clarity?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Subcommittee. What we agreed to do was provide body-worn cameras for all members of the Patrol Division and certain specialty units. That was to, initially was to be spread over a five-year period, three years if the funding allowed, but we're in the process of going back out for another RFP in order to make the purchase, and unfortunately, we're being impacted because two of the major providers are currently in litigation with each other. So we're trying to move our process forward. So we are headed towards providing body-worn cameras for the Full Patrol Division of the Police Department.
Now Milton, didn't we also ask for some type of policy that we need to create before we put those out, because of public requests and all that kind of stuff also?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you will recall, we had a discussion at a previous policy meeting about usage and the development of policy, and right now, within the procurement office, they're working with the Police Department on the scope for the next RFP. And when that RFP gets processed, and we select a vendor, then we would do, in fact, what the Vice Mayor indicated, and start equipping more members of the Patrol Division.
You mentioned right now if funding was allowable. I believe we voted in a budget for funding two years ago. Was it two, I don't know, I can't, we've, I just remember, I just remember voting for funding for body cameras, and only because that was one of the budget dynamics that was happening, and it happened to be part of the Phoenix Mobile, and that's why I knew so much about it. Because, so, funding has been allocated for body cameras. I'm not sure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, funding has been allocated in the interim. However, the price of body cameras and the storage issue has continued to go up. So is the funding that's been allocated going to be sufficient to supply 2,000 officers? That's an open question.
You know, maybe what we should do, now that we talked about on the sidebar, is bring this up in our next meeting, and kind of give us an update of where we're at and what happened two, three years ago.
Yes.
And just give us a timeline, and so we can refresh our memories also, because during that time, we had a change of police chief at that time, and there was a lot of transitions going on.
Yes.
I'm not sure if my colleagues feel good with that.
No, I'm fine with that, but the storage was a major problem two years ago when we were discussing that. As part of our legislative package, is there any funding out there that would help PD with that problem?
The grants that we pursue, Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Williams, the grants that we pursue on the body camera, and that's really their inclusion in the federal agenda, is that we pursue grant dollars for the body cameras. The dollars can be used not only for the cameras themselves, but also the storage issue that we were discussing.
Okay. Because I'm also very concerned about the policy. I think we need to have some privileges on, how long do we have to keep it? I mean, I think we need to have more knowledge about what your requirements are to meet your legal requirements.
And the whole thing on public requests on those body cameras, and the privacy of other individuals that are surrounding, or that might be in the vehicle while the police officer stops that vehicle.
Anything else?
Thank you very much. We have a couple cards here. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, question.
Can I maybe bring the, just two cards on this issue?
Okay.
We have Mr. Clark on Item 10 and 11, so you have a couple extra minutes to talk. Just got you a chair up here.
Thank you so, thank you so much for letting me speak. I am a resident of Phoenix. I'm encouraged by some of the, what you're doing here. I was going to bring up the bump stock, you know, ban, and as you know, I am disappointed that there wasn't an official resolution, but if I was in elective office, whether Democrat or Republican, I'd be terrified of the NRA as well, right now. I even have people on the left who are attacking me for even bringing this up, just to show you how divisive this is. But I think it shows political courage anyways, and I'm going to let my friends in my community know, our community know about this. The other thing, we had a personal meeting, thank you to the Assistant City Manager, and with the City Manager, Joanne Scott Woods, myself, a member of the Phoenix Human Relations Commission, I believe it's called, and another activist. So I'm glad that I have attended these meetings, and I'm glad that you were conscientiously asking these questions, but we were told the CPTI, because Council Lady Pastore brought this up about the cameras and all of this being approved, but I'm confused, and maybe the Assistant City Manager at some point, because they were kind enough to see us in a long meeting up here in City Hall a couple weeks ago, that the CPTI was, they're not listening, I mean, it's not in effect, the citizens came together, the City Manager told us that they won't, I guess apparently, there's nothing going. So I just think you should know, yeah, I'm concerned. So I need some, maybe follow-up, if one of the staff can contact me, because there's other folks that are going to be very curious, because there's confusion I have with the City Manager and the Assistant City Manager, because we were given the impression, and if I'm wrong, that's fine, but let's get some clarification, that the CPTI wasn't, really, didn't sound like it was going to be listened to, and the citizens aren't going to be brought back, and that's what we were told. But I'm hopeful, you know, my memory again, I like the Councilperson's Noakowsky suggestion to have this next week, but I just believe that it's sad if the CPTI isn't being listened to, and I was like Council Lady Pastore, I thought a lot of this stuff was done. So thank you so much. I would like to get clarification on that at some point in the future. I know you can't answer it right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That could be maybe a future agenda item that we can bring back and talk about in the future. All ready with that? Any other comments?
So I do want to make one last comment regarding DACA. DACA allows young people who were brought here illegally to the United States as children, and who meet several key criteria to be considered for temporary relief from deportation or from being placed in removal proceedings. However, DACA does not provide lawful status. Once granted, DACA is valid for two years and may be renewed. Individuals granted Deferred Action will also be eligible through request, employment authorization. DACA applicants go through extensive background checks, and it is granted on a case-to-case basis. So, as we know, as we know legislation, or there was an announcement made, that they would not receive any new renewals of DACA, and that it will be now thrown back into Congress to figure out the process for immigration, and so reform and integration. So that's, I looked up the definition of the U.S. Immigration Department, so that's what, that's what it is, and it allows young people to be eligible for DACA.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilmember?
I would move that we forward to the full City Council, the recommendation, plus any additions that this committee has made.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much. Now we're on the call to the public. We do have a card from Mr. Clark. I'm not sure if you already addressed it or not.
Thank you. I really, really appreciate your valuable time. I just love the fact, here in the city of Phoenix, you know, you guys, some of you represent probably larger amounts of people than some congressional, some congresspeople do. But my concern is this, as you know, unfortunately, we had the tragedy in Texas, and I'm just tired of hearing about how, you know, oh, you can't politicize it, just, you know, hopes and prayers and all of that. But I'm concerned that the Air Force, and I know, you know, the Constitution, and there's all kinds of reasons that might be given, that we could not talk to the Armed Forces Branches and the VA. I'm a veteran, and I know a lot of veterans are going to be angry what I'm about to ask you. But what I'm about to ask you is, can you, can we not have any more of these mix-ups? We already have these gun shows, we already have Tucson being said it can't melt down guns that are used to murder people after they've been confiscated. I know your hands are tied to a large extent, but you're still the moral leaders of the city. But can we talk to the VA? Can we talk to the Air Force? Can we talk to the Army, which I'm an Army veteran, and thank you to all the veterans who've served? Because this mix-up of this man, I mean, even our conservative friends, Paul Ryan, hey, this law was already on the books. And this is bureaucracy at its worst, because this bureaucracy at its worst, this red tape caused the deaths, probably, many would say, you know, even the people who were against me in my saying gun regulation recommendations, of all these beautiful people, half of which who were shot were children. So here in the city of Phoenix, I'm concerned as a resident, that, while already with our mental health issues, I know you're doing as much as you can, but are you legally prevented from having somebody in the city of Phoenix? Because I saw your people, you're going to be in the federal government lobbying them, albeit the state legislature with your folks this session, God willing. Can you go to the Army and the Air Force and say, please, can you make sure, can we have an immediate review of, you know, my fellow veterans? I don't care, I'm on there too, you know? People who have domestic violence, because I want to know, if I go into a church, one of our, my fellow residents of Phoenix, we go into a church, and we're sitting there in a house of God, and some monster comes in, and because the Air Force is snafu, what can you try? And if you say, look, Mr. Clark, we can't even, you know, that's constitutional, but it just seems hard to believe that we couldn't do something. This is not an attack on veterans. I'm just asking, please, people need to know when they go into a church, nobody wants to do anything, everybody's frozen, oh, if you could do something, you would stand out above all of these other leaders. We're all waiting for somebody to do something. At least do that. Make sure the Air Force, Army, Marines, all of them are reviewing the records. We have a lot of people here in Phoenix, millions of people now. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Now we're on future agenda items.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So my recollection is we have one meeting left in the calendar year, and so there's a sheet, I think you all have it. It's got 10 items on it. So if you want a, you just asked for a body-worn camera discussion, so we'll have that in December. We can tie into that, Mr. Clark's comments relative to CPTI and how that folds in, so that's there. Are there particular items off this list? Oh, Neighborhood Block Watch is coming back.
That would probably be the next one?
Yes.
We have, on here, it says judicial appointments, holiday shopping, parking for December, and then Block Watch.
Right.
And then CPTI, and body-worn cameras. Do we, that's a hefty meeting?
That'll fill out your time.
Or do we want to put one for January?
I think that'll be.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'd give it up to staff to decide. They know the link and the discussion, which way to go.
Yeah.
And modify as needed.
As needed, okay.
Now, is there anything else for a future agenda item that we need to add to our list?
I think we're okay right now.
Whatever happened to drones?
It's not on here.
Essentially, we were preempted by the state.
And what did they do? Could you bring it and give us? Not soon, I mean, this is...
January?
January, February, whatever, but, yeah, because more and more are out there, and this is going to be a big holiday consumer item, and every kid wants them, and it makes me very nervous how they're being operated and where they're being operated.
So, yes, Amazon is still moving forward with their plans to start using them to deliver packages, and you're right, the users are continuing to grow, and both police, fire, and emergency management here, we're trying to develop a rationale for using them ourselves in certain situations. They would be very helpful when you're talking about mountain rescue, because people venture far off the trail, it's hard to figure out where they are, to figure out a strategy how to get them down. A drone would help that. And so we're, it's one of those things, like in the beginning, you weren't sure if cellphones would take off, or Twitter would take off, drones have taken off. And we're either going to be a part of it, or be watching, so we're trying to figure out how to be a part of it.
They take off a lot more.
Yeah, they are.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All ready? Any other future agenda items with that? This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.